Ok, ché, désolée, j'ai été en retard. Mon... Mon... mon chien ne... ... ne fait pas cuire assez de l'eau. Permettez-moi de mettre le microphone un peu plus près. Bienvenue, bonjour tout le monde ! Comment allez-vous ? Salut Comet, tu vas obtenir ta photo manuelle... Euh, bientôt. Permettez-moi de la écrire pour ne pas la oublier. Donc, j'ai écris ça, je ne l'oublierai pas, j'espère. La première chose de toute une fois dans cette stream et que vous rédigez. Salut PegasusC, salut Comet et salut Arusha, comment allez-vous tout le monde ? J'espère que vous allez bien. J'espère vraiment que vous allez bien. Mon nez est affaibli. Et je coughe beaucoup. Mais oui, nous allons... Nous avons une liste à faire... Bon, pas longue, mais nous avons une liste à faire. Nous avons une liste à faire que nous devons travailler sur aujourd'hui, donc... Pouvez-vous le croire ? Le cowbot ! Deux pings maintenant ? Vous allez obtenir deux pings. Qu'est-ce que c'est ? Bonne nuit, Arusha. Bonne nuit ! Vous ne voulez pas rester un peu plus longtemps ? Vous ne le voulez pas ? Non, 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 vous ne le voulez pas ? Oui, nous avons... oui. Nous avons deux pings maintenant. Qu'est-ce qui se passe ? Pourquoi ? Oh, j'ai... Oui. Je suis très mauvaise avec les choses techniques. Comme vous avez probablement remarqué. Lorsque tu te lèves le matin... Oh ! Oh, Arusha, tu es si chouette ! Je n'ai pas eu de ping. Oui, peut-être que tu as arrêté les ping. Ça pourrait être. Parce que je n'obtiens que des ping de canaux spécifiques. Parce que j'ai... J'ai mute tous les autres canaux. Tous les autres serveurs. Donc oui. Salut Demon... attends. Oh oui, salut Demon, bienvenue ! Vous allez aussi dormir maintenant, comme Arusha. C'est possible, oui, ça pourrait être. Parce que je n'obtiens pas de ping pour d'autres serveurs. Seulement pour... Pour Vanessa, pour Chiu et pour Yoko. Et évidemment pour moi. Ce sont les seuls. Je vais avoir... j'ai eu des ping pour... Je suis très heureuse que nous ayons eu des ping de quelque sorte. Je veux dire, deux ping, mieux que pas. Faut poster vite. C'est assez difficile de taper avec mes nouvelles nails. Ne vous inquiétez pas, vous n'avez pas oublié. Vous n'avez pas oublié, ne vous inquiétez pas. Vous n'avez pas oublié. Ne vous inquiétez pas. Vous aurez... Vous obtiendrez votre ping de chien. Oh, j'ai reçu un message par PegasusC. La première chose que je fais, commençant avec cette pute là, c'est griller. Je suis déjà fatiguée, pouvez-vous... Pouvez-vous le croire ? Oh, j'ai... Oui, j'aime ça. Permettez-moi... Je vais faire ça et me mettre en prison. Je peux totalement le croire. Oui. Donc, vous voyez, ma liste à faire est assez longue aujourd'hui. Je dois écrire deux emails. Ce qui devrait prendre peut-être une session d'études et puis je dois écrire deux pages. Deux pages. Je veux essayer d'obtenir deux pages, au moins une et demi, mais je veux essayer deux. Comme toujours. C'est comme toujours. C'est juste comme toujours. Oh, et hier, j'ai été à la bibliothèque, j'ai deux nouveaux livres. J'en ai commandé de la bibliothèque qui est assez loin. Donc oui. Oh mon Dieu. Ché, s'il vous plaît... Faites-moi plus éveillée, faites-moi plus éveillée. S'il vous plaît. Je dois être plus éveillée. Mais oui. Oh, devrions-nous commencer déjà ? Probablement. Plus tôt nous commençons, mieux. Plus nous pouvons... ... faire. Mais oui. Je pense que je vais... Je ne veux pas... Je ne veux pas... Mais je vais commencer... Maintenant. Je vous verrai... En 25 minutes, ché.
Break time, guys. Break time. Um... Okay. Um, we finished one email. Which is a good start. I'm... I only need to write one sentence in the second email and have to send it out, then that is done as well. So, yeah. What did I miss? Um... "Hi Dawn and hi Totoro, what come in? How are you?" Yeah, thank you for reminding me about the song. At least you had the cat purring! And "Hi Psycho, what come in? How are you?" Guys, don't forget to drink something! Ah... It was a sound, was it in-game? I'm not sure. Um... Yes, I'm now focused on studies, but right now it's break time, but... Yeah. Oh, it's kinda cold. I'm... I'm so stressed right now, guys, you have... You probably know, but because I'm complaining a lot. I'm... I'm so stressed out. I'm doing good, I guess. I'm doing alright. I was... I asked 10 days ago. 10 days ago! I asked two professors if they... like... One is my guide... guidance teacher for the bachelor thesis. I asked for a... for an appointment, because I got questions, and I need them answered. Mm-hmm. I need them fucking answered! Um... And he didn't answer, so I just sent a reminder. And, and, um... The other professor, I asked if you want to be my second, uh... tester? I don't know what it's called, but you have to have two professors sitting there to... to... Make sure your bachelor thesis is okay and your... your presentation is okay. We need the ans... exactly, we need the fucking answers! And I asked him if he wants to be the second one, because the first one is my guidance, uh... professor. I already got him. And I asked the second one, because I was not sure who to ask. I asked the one who's always... who is more or less the boss of my department. And he did not answer, so I'm asking one of the... one of the help teachers now if she wants to be my... my second, uh... test... Proofreader, I don't know what it's called, guys, I don't know what it's called, but, you know. And I'm so... I'm so fu... ah! I'm so angry! I'm so fucking angry! I have less than a week! Less than a week to register that shit! Can you imagine? Less than a week, I have to... I have to register that shit! Evaluation reader, I think. Oh, yeah! Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense! That makes sense, yeah, I'm, ah! I'm... I'm so pissed! I feel left alone, like... They should take care of me! I pay for that shit! I'm so angry! So angry, I'm 20 pages in! By the way, that's a third, I just... I noticed yesterday, it's a third! We... we finished a third of my bachelor thesis. I'm so happy that we finished a third already, that's so cool! But to think that maybe my professor, my guidance professor is gonna say "yeah nah", the... the questions I... I have is about my sources, if they are okay or not. Because some of the sources are a little bit questionable, but they are the only sources I got. And if he says "nah, that's not good enough", then I have to start all over again. And... and I... I have to... I might have to start with another, like, with a new topic and have to start all over again. That would... That would ruin me, I would have to spend another semester in university to get that shit done. Can you imagine? That's why I'm so angry right now. That's why I'm so angry right now. I feel left alone. And it's... I hate it, I hate it! Because I know for a fact that the other students don't... don't experience that. Not all of them, some do, some are in the same shoes as I am, but not all, and it's so frustrating. But I'm gonna go back to study, I have to finish that email really quick. And... and then we're gonna keep on writing, because I wanna get that shit done as quick as possible. So, I will see you in 25 minutes, I hope you're not as frustrated as I am. So, see you soon!
Break time guys. Break time. Okay. Um, we finished one email. Which is a good start. I'm... I only need to write one sentence in the second email and have to send it out and that is done as well. So yeah, what did I miss? Um... "Hi Dawn and hi Taulo, what come in? How are you?" Yeah, thank you for reminding me about the song. At least you had the cat purring! And hi Psycho, what come in? How are you? Guys don't forget to drink something. There was a sound, was it in-game? I'm not sure. Um, yes, I'm now focused on studies, but right now it's break time, but... Yeah. Oh, it's kinda cold. I'm... I'm so stressed right now guys, you have... You probably know, but because I'm complaining a lot. I'm... I'm so stressed out. I'm doing good, I'm... I'm doing alright, I'm doing alright. I was, I asked 10 days ago. 10 days ago! I asked two professors if they, like... One is my, my guide, guidance teacher for the bachelor thesis. I asked for, for an appointment because I got questions and I need them answered. Mm-hmm. I need them fucking answered! Um, and he didn't answer, so I just sent a reminder. And, and, um... The other professor, I asked if you want to be my second... Uh, tester? I don't know what it's called, but you have to have two professors sitting there to, to... Make sure your bachelor thesis is okay and your, your presentation is okay. We need the ans- exactly, we need the fucking answers. And I asked him if he wants to be the second one because the first one is my guidance, uh, professor. I already got him. And I asked the second one because I was not sure who to ask. I asked the one who's always, who is more or less the boss of my department. And he did not answer, so I'm asking one of the, one of the help teachers now if she wants to be my, my second, uh, test proofreader. I don't know what it's called guys, I don't know what it's called, but, you know. And... I'm so, I'm so f- ah! I'm so angry! I'm so fucking angry! I have less than a week! Less than a week to register that shit! Can you imagine? Less than a week, I have to, I have to register that shit! Evaluation, read, I think. Oh yeah! Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense. That makes sense, yeah, I'm, ah! I'm, I'm so pissed! I feel left alone, like... They should take care of me! I pay for that shit! I'm so angry! So angry, I'm 20 pages in! By the way, that's a third, I just, I noticed yesterday, it's a third! We, we finished a third of my bachelor thesis. I'm so happy that we finished a third already, that's so cool! But to think that maybe my professor, my guidance professor is gonna say, "Yeah nah, the, the questions I, I have is about my sources, if they are okay or not." Because some of the sources are a little bit questionable, but they are the only sources I got. And if he says nah, that's not good enough, then I have to start all over again. And, and I, I have to... I might have to start with another, like with a new topic and have to start all over again. That would... That would ruin me. I would have to spend another semester in university to get that shit done. Can you imagine? That's why I'm so angry right now. That's why I'm so angry right now. I feel left alone. And it's, I hate it, I hate it! Because I know for a fact that the other students don't, don't experience that. Not all of them, some do, some are in the same shoes as I am, but not all, and it's so frustrating. But I'm gonna go back to study, I have to finish that email really quick. And, and then we're gonna keep on writing because I wanna get that shit done as quick as possible. So I will see you in 25 minutes. I hope you're not as frustrated as I am. So, see you soon!
Break time guys. You have no idea. You have no fucking idea how pissed I am right now. Oh my gosh. I sent that fucking email. Because he did not answer me for 10 days. So I sent another email to remind him. And do you know, do you know what? Do you know what? It took him, let me see. 3 minutes. 3 minutes. To answer. It took him fucking 3 minutes to answer. Why did I wait 10 days if it was only a 3 minute answer? Like what the fuck? What the fuck? I'm not gonna yell in German. I'm, I'm, I'm so pissed. And hi Shroom, welcome in, how are you? I, I see when I got DMs, you don't have to remember me, I see that. I see that. Can you imagine, I waited 10 days. 10 fucking days. Then I sent a reminder to ask, hey, could we maybe find a fucking appointment? I got some questions I have to ask. Are you for real, Komet? Just so you know. Angry me also speaks English, okay? Aber 2 min Deutsch von mir aus, von mir aus. Alter ich hab, ich hab dem, ich hab dem vor 10 Tagen geschrieben. Vor 10 fucking Tagen habe ich ihm geschrieben. Er antwortet jetzt? Ich habe ihn, ich habe ihn nur Erinnerung geschrieben jetzt vor, keine Ahnung, man hat das eine halbe Stunde ungefähr. Er braucht fucking 3 Minuten um zu antworten. Wenn es doch so einfach ist. Wenn es doch so einfach ist. Und wisst ihr was er schreibt? Wisst ihr, wisst ihr was er schreibt? Ich habe nämlich dazu geschrieben, ey ich würde gerne einen Online-Termin machen, weil wenn wir, denn der erste Termin wollte ich auf jeden Fall Präsenz haben, weil ich kannte ihn nicht. So zweiter Termin von mir aus online, ist mir scheißegal. Ist mir so scheißegal. Also habe ich dazu zugeschrieben, dass auch online vollkommen fein für mich wäre. Zack, antwortete. Innerhalb von 3 Minuten. Gerne können wir noch einmal ein Bewegsternmin einstellen. Ja schön. Schön, hätte man mir das nicht vor 10 Tagen schon schreiben können. Oder sagen wir vor 8 Tagen. Ich erwarte ja nicht, dass man sofort antwortet. Ich erwarte ja nicht, dass man, alter kann man nicht sein. Vor allen Dingen angesichts zahlreicher Betreuung von Arbeiten sollten wir diesen Termin dann doch für alle noch offene Fragen müssen. Das heißt, ich bekomme sagen und schreiben einen Termin nur noch. In den nächsten, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 Wochen. In den nächsten 6 Wochen. Komme ich allen fucking Termin. Ich schreibe eine Bachelorarbeit. Sorry, aber wenn der so überfordert ist, warum nimmst du so viele Arbeiten an? Was ist das? So viele Leute sollten zu dieser Zeit gar keine Arbeiten schreiben. So viele gibt es nicht, die im Wintersemester abgeben. Die meist geben im Sommersemester ab. Was das? Jetzt bin, oh my god, girl. I'm so pissed. I'm so fucking pissed, guys. It took him 3 minutes to answer my question from, from 10 days ago. 3 minutes. And I do not understand why you were saying German sounds hot, that's like, huh? I'm not saying bad words, I'm just saying normal words. I cannot pet Manju. She's too far away and she's asleep. I'm, I'm so pissed. Exactly, Tauro, you're my mod, you're supposed to tell me when 2 minutes are over. The question is, do I have to register for next semester or not? Tangy German is rare, yeah it is. Huh? Did, did, did the auto mod say German is an ugly language is, is, is bad? No, German is ugly, it is, it is, don't worry, it is. Yeah, but I'm gonna go back to study, I have to write that email. Have to write that email really quick. By the way, by the way, I'm gonna add a third email. Like why not? It's not like I already have enough on my to-do list. It's not like I got enough. No, 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 put another one on there. I had to learn from 5th grade to end of 5th. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I had to, I'm so sorry. If I would, if I would not have grown up here, I would be terrible in German. But yeah, I will see you in 25 minutes.
Break time. As you can see, we finished all of our emails. And I wrote maybe 2 sentences in the bachelor thesis. Mandru came over while she's laying on my lap and trying to... I don't know. Comfort me, I don't know. I hate it. I hate it so much. I'm still so pissed. On Monday, I have to... Monday is the last day I can register my thesis. Guys, don't forget to drink something. Monday is the last day I can register. Without registering for the next semester. I'm gonna register myself for the next semester anyway. I don't know how I'm gonna afford it, but... It will be just safety. I mean, if I can get everything done before the next semester, I'm gonna get my money back. I just checked that. Apparently, I get my money back. In case I finish before the next semester even starts. But it does not change the fact that I have to register. Just in case. Which is 96 euros for a whole fucking semester. It's a lot of money. And it's so frustrating. Because if the professors would answer quickly, that's cheap. For you, it's cheap. For you, it might be cheap. But I have 200 euros a month I have to survive on. So 69 euros out of that 200 is a lot of money. Almost half of my money. So yeah. And yeah, even for German standards, it's kinda cheap. Even for the German standards, it's cheap. So yeah. I'm gonna have to see how I'm gonna do it. I'm sorry, guys, but you know where my coffee is if you wanna help, but you obviously do not have to. You do not have to help me. But if you want, I would really appreciate it. It's so frustrating. I told my mom I'm gonna be done by March. And I mean, it might be April, which is... She will be proud anyway, but still. Still. I have to pay for the whole fucking semester. It's so frustrating. Sorry that today is a not-so-happy stream. I was just waiting for it to happen, to be honest. I knew. I'm gonna have a stream where I will be like this today. It was gonna happen. It was gonna happen. I knew it. I knew it was gonna happen sooner or later. But yeah, you told me to ask where is the food. Which? What food? What food? Huh? What food is he talking about? I'm confused? What food? I do not have any food. Oh, okay. I don't have any food. I can barely afford food for myself. I can't... I'm sorry, but we need child support comment. We need child support comment. Why don't you give your son food? Chicken burrito. Oh, I want one too. Can I have one? Can I have one too? Yes, I can have a chicken burrito! Yeah! That would be pretty cool. Where is Arthur heading? I think he told us, but I forgot. But yeah, I have to go back to study. Because I wanna write a little bit more than just one sentence. Just a tiny bit more. So I will see you in 25 minutes.
Break time. As you can see, we finished all of our emails. And I wrote maybe two sentences in the bachelor thesis. Mandrake came over, she's laying on my lap and trying to, to... I don't know. Comfort me, I don't know. I hate it. I hate it so much. I'm still so pissed. On Monday, I have to... Monday is the last day I can register my, my thesis. Um... Guys, don't forget to drink something. Monday is the last day I can, uh, can register. Without registering for the next semester. I will, I'm gonna register myself for the next semester anyway. I don't know how I'm, I'm gonna afford it, but... It will be... Just safety. I mean, if I can get everything done before the next semester, I'm gonna get my money back. I just checked that. Apparently, I get my money back. Um... In case I finish before the next semester even starts. But... It does not change the fact that I have to register. Just in case. Which is ninety-six euros. For a whole fucking semester. It's... It's a lot of money. And it's so frustrating. Because if the professors would answer quickly, that's cheap. For you, it's cheap. For you, it might be cheap. But I have two hundred euros a month I have to survive on. So sixty-nine euros out of that two hundred is a lot of money. Almost half of my money. So, yeah. And yeah, even for German standards, it's kinda cheap. Even for the German standards, it's cheap. So, yeah. I'm gonna, I have to see how I'm gonna do it. I'm sorry, guys, but you know where my coffee is if you wanna help, but you obviously do not have to. You do not have to help me. But if you want, I, I would really appreciate it. It's... It's so frustrating. I told my mom I'm gonna be done by March. And... I mean, it might be April, which is, she will be proud anyway, but still. Still. I have to pay for the whole fucking semester. It's so frustrating. Sorry that today is a not-so-happy stream. I was just waiting for it to happen, to be honest. I knew. I'm gonna have a stream... Where I... Will be like, like this today. It's always, it, it gonna, it was gonna happen. It was gonna happen. I knew it. I knew it weren't gonna happen sooner or later. But yeah, you told me to ask where is the food. Which, what food? What food? Huh? What food is he talking about? I'm confused? What food? I'm hungry. I do not have any food. Oh, okay. I don't have any food. I can barely afford food for myself. I can't... I'm sorry, but, uh, we need child support comment. We need child support comment. Why don't you give your son food? Chicken burrito. Oh, I want one too. Can I have one? Can I have one too? Yes, I can have a chicken burrito! Yeah! That would be pretty cool. Where's Arthur heading? Did, I think he told us, but I forgot. But yeah, I have to go back to study. Uh, because I wanna write a little bit more than just one sentence. Just a tiny bit more. So I will see you in twenty-five minutes.
Guys! It's break time! Can you imagine? It's break time! And we got half a page! Manju, come here! Come here! And hi Hyasha, how are you? How are you doing? Are we doing good? Are we doing good? Yeah, come here, main baby! Come in, how are you? I don't know if I... You did 3 emails today, I already have failed. Yeah, today I'm... It does not... To be fair, it does not feel like it. Does not feel like it. These 3 emails, 2 out of these 3 emails... Took a lot of energy out of me. And I only got half a page because the source I found last time, I can still use it. I do not have to search for a new one yet. That's so good, that helps me so much. Without that... Eh, it wouldn't be that good. Wouldn't be that good. But yeah. Fine, thanks, I'll do it. I'm doing alright! You missed my rage mode! We even got it in German! Because, I don't know, was it Comet? Someone redeemed speak German for 2 minutes and we had a rage mode. I'm gonna clip it later. Um, I think I'm gonna... I put it on my to-do list, I'm gonna clip it. Because I think I can make a funny video out of it. Yeah, we love sources we can use! Yeah, nothing like English! Yeah, I feel a lot better... Not a lot better, but I feel a bit better now that I rage. And I, I, um, went back to writing. Feels a bit better. Still a bit worried about how to afford college. But, we will figure it out! I'm gonna figure... I always figure it out somehow. Okay. So, I'm always gonna figure it out somehow. In forward 2 days, yeah. Also, the ward will be up, so if you want, you can check it out before I clip it. But wait, it's a bit far away. Do you already have a rough estimate when you're starting to stream on Wednesday? Um, I was thinking about... I don't wanna start it too late, I don't wanna start at 6pm. You're German, right? You're also German, so if I talk in my timezone, you probably have... Obviously have the same one. So, I didn't wanna start at 6pm, I think between 4 and 5pm. So, Arusha has a chance to be here. Um, but yeah, that's, that's... The goal? It depends on what I have to do on that day. Because, like, obviously, I have a live outs... I know, shocking, but I have a live outside of streaming. So, um, how dare you? I'm so sorry, I'm so, so sorry! Oh yo, how dare I have a live outside? But yeah, it depends on my, my to-do list. Um, I usually sleep pretty long. Um, but I stay up very long too, so, um... I wanna do... I also, I already got the, the, the application shit, um... Shrimpy sent it over to me, I have to just, I just have to access it and check it. And, yeah, so I have to prep a bit. I don't know, I'll probably do it tomorrow. So yeah, some, somewhere between 4 and 5pm, I think. It is very good, I try to be there, of course. Yeah. I mean, the, if, even if you're missing... I upload almost every ward on YouTube and every, every ward is here on Twitch. I do, I do not hide them. So even if you miss, you can check it out. Yeah. But yeah, sometimes I don't upload the study streams on, on YouTube because, I don't know, I just... Sometimes I think it's just boring to, to go on my channel and see study stream, study stream, study stream, study stream. You know? But yeah. I have to go back. It's not boring, we're all here on... Yeah, I still don't understand why you guys choose to be here when there are more entertaining streamers out there. But don't get me wrong, I'm very, I'm very grateful you guys are here, I appreciate you, you being here. But yeah, I'm gonna go back to study now, see you in 25 minutes.
Oh, it's big break time! Guys, by the way. We got a page. We got a page! Do you see that? We only have like... One page left? We won't... We probably won't get the full page. Because I have to find new sources first. So, who knows? But, I'm... I'm... That's insane! And don't forget to drink something! Manju? Mm-hmm. I can't believe that we... We were so productive today! It's insane! That's insane! Wait, give me a moment. There's a new Beard Meets Food video. Let me... Let this go away. There's a new Beard Meets Food video. Um, I did not watch it yet because I thought we could watch it together. We could watch it together, maybe. That would be cool. Would be very cool. There, this one. Oh, we haven't watched this one either! I'll put that on for you guys. Perfect. We have to... Can someone put it to just chatting mods? Is someone here? Someone here? That could put it to just chatting.
Alright, another beautiful day in Vegas.
Give me a second. You will get your screen back in just one moment.
Here you go. Here is your screen back.
I'm gonna make dinner really quick. Um... And then, I will snack on my dinner and try to write another page afterwards. So... I will be back in just a minute because I just have to put it in your oven. Um, it's okay, Manju. It's okay. Just have to put it in your oven and then I will be back. And then we have to wait for it to be done. Get a lot of kisses for Manju. But yeah, I will see you guys in a minute.
Thank you! That's so cool! I don't even know how I'm gonna eat this.
Oh, it's big break time! Guys, by the way, we got a page. We got a page! Do you see that? We only have like... one page left? We won't... we probably won't get the full page, because I have to find new sources first. So, who knows? But, I'm... That's insane, and don't forget to drink something! Manju? Mm-hmm. I can't believe that we... we were so productive today. It's insane! That's insane! Wait, give me a moment. The answer. Perfect. Perfect! Guys, I cannot believe it. I... I can't believe it. I can't believe it. I'm gonna, um... Okay, so I'm gonna put something on for you guys. Because I'm not gonna let you bore yourself to death over here. Um... Alright, there's a new Beard Meets Food video. Me... Me... This go away? There's a new Beard Meets Food video. Um, I did not watch it yet, because I thought we could watch it together. We could watch it together, maybe. That would be cool. Would be very cool. There, this one. Oh, we haven't watched this one either! I'll put that on for you guys.
This looks a bit big.
Perfect. We have to... Can someone put it to just chatting mods? Is someone here? Someone here? That could put it to just chatting. Give me a second, you will get your screen back in just one moment. Here you go. Here's your screen back. I'm gonna make dinner really quick. And then, I will snack on my dinner and try to write another page afterwards. So... I will be back in just a minute, because I just have to put it in your oven. Um, it's okay, Manju. It's okay. Just have to put it in your oven, and then I will be back. And then we have to wait for it to be done. Get a lot of kisses for Manju. But yeah, I will see you guys in a minute.
Right, I just saw him cooking it, and I'm almost certain that I'm gonna lose, because this thing looks flipping massive. So, uh... I hope I can get it. I'll give my best, but you only get 23 minutes, so... Hopefully have a good day. We'll see. I think it's coming. I think that's me. Thank you. That's so cool. I don't even know how I'm gonna eat this.
What you have right there is our famous Cuban sandwich with the ingredients. Let's go ahead and start with chorizo, which is ground pork. Right? We also have bacon, we have beef, we have breaded beef, we have ham, eggs, lettuce, American cheese, beans, and all the veggies that you can mind of, right?
Nice, and you get 23 minutes?
Uh, yeah, that's right. The cash prize is going to be a hundred dollars.
There's a cash prize?
Yeah, it is. Correct.
Alright. I'll see, I'll do my best. Good to go, yeah?
Yeah.
I can start? Alright, alright, thank you.
So, I'm back. I'm back. We have to wait ten... Oh shit, I have to put the timer on. Give me a second, I have to put the timer on. You would be kinda sad if I forget my food in the oven. It would be... Really sad. I got a treat from Manju. He's gonna get it now. Here you go, baby.
I haven't even tried the Spanish sausage yet.
Perfect. Do you want another one? Here you go. Okay, so we're gonna relax a little bit.
It tastes good? It tastes good. What? There is no way I'm anywhere near them. That guy's crazy. I might have to get a doggy bag. The eternal indignity of the doggy bag. It looms. I'm not even gonna bother with the lettuce. We'll leave that till the end. Never ending. Huh? Not enough time, not enough. It's delicious, though.
How much time does he have? I didn't... I missed that. How much time does he have? Oh hi, baby, or is it, um, the quickest possible? To get a new high score or something, you know? What is it?
I just ate a really spicy piece. I've got one minute left. One minute.
Oh, okay, you got one minute left. Twenty-three minutes is such a random number. Why is it... Why that number? Like, make it twenty-five or make it twenty, but not twenty-three? And it's the first time I see that he loses. And hi, Poxius, welcome in! How are you? Hope you're doing good? We're currently in, uh, break time, waiting for my dinner to be done. Waiting for my dinner to be done, and then we eat, and then we go back to study. By the way, we were very productive today. We have one page already, and we wrote three emails. It's love. Yeah, how are you? Hope you're doing good? Oh, you got a dessert? Thank... Oh, thank you, Poxius. Thank you. Why does the sticker not... I got press-on nails. But, um... The left thumb always loses the nail. And I don't know why. I don't know why. It's not sticking. A bit annoying. Okay, so we have to have... We have to watch this one. That's the one. That's the new one. I haven't watched it, because I was waiting for you guys. Yeah, I think the nail is not gonna stick. For what reason ever. Oh, did I save?
It's appropriate that I'm in Phoenix after last week's episode. A phoenix, of course, being a mythical winged beast which arises from the ashes of its own corpse. Don't that wanna sound dramatic?
Holy shit, that... I was curious how many views that video has. It's 2,141,944 views. In just one day! In one day! But I hope it's awesome if I could do that one day. But that's amazing! No idea how... Um, he's doing that, but, well... Obviously, I know how he's doing that. It's interesting content.
Yeah, that's the thing about pasties. If you don't let them cool, um, it can be like eating pure napalm. Wait a second, did you say you get a mug? That's... That might even be better than a t-shirt, you know? A mug? We've got a little guide to Cornish dialect here. I probably should know some of this, because my granny's actually Cornish. Hey, look at this! Not the first beard man to try the giant Cornish pasty seemingly. Alright, so these are the regular size pasties. And this is the giant... Was it like five pounds? Five pound-ish? Alright, there's a bit of Beard Meets Food tax on this one. I get it, I get it. Fortunately, I'm hungry. I realize, by the way, you might be able to tell. I'm getting Jane almost zit in between my, uh, my eyes. Um, I do know it's there. You can feel free to not comment about it. I'll equally comment if you like. Oh, here it comes. I don't know how you're gonna squeeze it in there. Love the full jug of gravy as well.
Ooh, that looks good! Oh, I kinda wanna eat that.
And, uh, I'm taking on the giant pasty challenge, which so far only four people have done. You get one hour to eat a five-pound Cornish pasty. What's in a Cornish pasty? Could you tell the viewers at home? Ruta Vega. What do we call those in England? How much does it cost?
Fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks, but if you do it inside, in one hour, it's free. And you get a mug.
Okay, I think it's one hour, so you can do it. We're not eating yet, but we're gonna eat garlic bread and cheese. I got some oven cheese leftover from yesterday. Gonna eat that with garlic bread today. Had that with Piccolini pizza yesterday. Absolutely recommend. Put your pizza in the oven cheese. I saw it on TikTok. I was way too easy to influence. Immediately ran to the store and got it.
Ooh, that's peppery. I mean, really, you should eat a pasty with your hands. It is delicious, though. Taste is really good.
The dough around it kinda looks dry. Doesn't it? Kinda looks dry. Oh, hi! Kagav? Is that how you pronounce? If I'm wrong, please correct me. Kagav? Welcome in, how are you? Hope you're doing good? Hi! I'm doing good. I'm doing good. We're just having a break right now, waiting for my dinner to be ready. It's in the oven. It should be done in half a minute. Is that another way what... The way you said it is fine. Oh! You can correct me if it's wrong. That's totally fine. I always try my best. You guys don't forget to drink something. My food is done. My food is... I will be back in just a moment. But it's hard to take so long. Oh, okay. I'm just gonna call Kagav, and, and... I don't know. If it annoys you, you can always give me another nickname or correct me. But yeah, I'm gonna get my dinner real quick.
Look at that. That's a great shot. You have to send me that. Miraculous that I'm still single. Oh, man. This is never-ending. Am I right in saying that, um, when the pasty was originally invented, they invented it so people could take it down a mine, so it's kinda like a ready-made meal? You don't have to put it in a box. The pastry's the box. And, uh, a good pastry should be able to sustain a rather large fall down a mineshaft. I heard that somewhere. I heard that somewhere.
Oh, I forgot. I forgot to mute myself. Oh no! Did you guys hear me making a voice note to a friend? I hope not. What? K... Oh, so Kagav? Is it Kagav? Is that how you say? Hi, Pegasus, welcome back! I think we didn't just assume rumbling. You might didn't pick up. Oh, good. Good, 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 good. Good, 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 good. Because I might have doxxed myself if I hadn't moved, like, you know? It could, could... It could have been gone very wrong. Oh, it smells so good! I'm so hungry! Yeah, okay, good. Quick. Because we have to continue writing. What are you eating? I'm eating um, a garlic bread. And oven cheese. You know? I had... Yesterday, I had this mini pizza, the Piccolini, with my oven cheese, and today I'm eating the leftover. It's good. It's all good. If you have the chance, get yourself some Piccolini pizza and an oven cheese. Mm-hmm. I know you have quite some travel time. I live pretty far away from it. I wish it wasn't that far away, because all of my friends are in and around Frankfurt. Well... Oh no! Yeah, see you soon, Taro. Well, yeah, it's not that... That doxy dogs. I don't know. Because one hour is still pretty far. It's still pretty far.
You are fully converted to like the American vernacular, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm a little bit further away. And by a little bit, I mean a lot. Let's see what else we can watch. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to... Um, Pegasus, don't mind. I just have to send something in your chat. Um, so I remember it. So don't mind it. Just don't mind it. Everything's alright. Let's go with Eric the Electric. He's always a good choice. It is far. Two hours is far. One hour, okay. No problem. But two hours is pretty far. You have to think about the gas and everything. True, true. Use it, use it. I haven't watched it yet, but it looked interesting, so I had to save it. Even though it turned out... It is. But I do enjoy long drives, like four-to-six-hour drives. Yeah, I do enjoy that, because you have some downtime in the car, like... You can actually settle in. Welcome back, Taro. You did not miss anything, don't worry. You didn't really miss anything. Mostly me crunchy. I'm eating garlic bread. I'm eating garlic bread. And some cheese. Ooh, good question. Do you like chunky peanut butter, or do you like smooth peanut butter? I'm team smooth. Smooth too, yeah. Both? No, Pegasus, I'm sorry. I have to unmod you. I have to unmod you. Yeah, like, we drove to Holland as well. Not last summer, but a few summers back. And it was just like, yeah, I just downloaded a movie and watched it, and it was fine. And it was just like, yeah, I just downloaded a movie and watched it and it was fine. Again. Tauro, do you like smooth peanut butter? Or do you like chunky peanut, peanut butter? He's eating the world's heaviest man's daily diet. That's what he's doing. Can't watch a movie when you're traveling though. True, true, I think I... Oh, I had a driver's license at that age. But my mom is one of those people who cannot cannot be a passenger. She has to drive. Chunky, oh, I'm sorry, Tauro, but you also get, uh, get to be unmodded. Chunky? Really? I'm, I actually prefer to drive. I like driving. Or let's just say flying. Because, um... I might be a loose, beady and, um, and yeah. What is your first two and three hours? After I need a break after, no. That's, that's alright. I like Reese's, they're good. I'm full back now. Oh no, when I say I'm flying, I'm talking about the car. I'm still talking about the car. I'm, I'm, I'm... I'm flying with the car. You don't know the difference, Tauro. Tauro! Please, what the fuck? I'm so, I'm, what? Tauro, do you like chunky peanut butter, you know, with still some, some chunks in it, or do you like smooth peanut butter? With no chunks in it? Oh, it's named after Tauro? I didn't know. I do like smooth, uh, uh, too. It's just, it's just... It's just good. I want some fries now.
Even with the unnecessary amount of vegetables, this sandwich tasted my point. But unfortunately, all this bread was really starting to hit me. But fortunately, I was able to push through and finish off the sandwich. Well, I got done all the fries, the subs. Fortunately, I still have this Coca-Cola leftover, which I'm gonna use in my next food adventure. So yeah, I'm gonna hold off on the rest of this Coke for now.
Officially, I'm, wait, oh, no, wait. I, I, I didn't see your name correctly. I thought, I thought you were Hiyashi. Hyasha? Hyasha, I think. I was like, "Didn't you just eat?" But no. You're in fact, not him. Go get some food! Go get some food! Get yourself a snack, snack and a little drink! Fine. I feel that. I can never drink something with, um, gas when I eat chocolate. I'm getting tummy ache. I'm getting tummy ache if I do that. I do not like Snickers. I do not like Snickers because it's chunky. Because it's the best, Milky Way. Oh, Milky Way is pretty good, but I'm a Twix girlie. You can't have chocolate? Why not? Yeah, I like Twix. And Mars is pretty good. Uh, no, Milky Way? Or Mars? Where's the difference? I don't remember, oh my gosh. Allergic, oh no! Oh, Lion is a good one, yeah. If you're allergic to chocolate, that means you're allergic to cockroaches. Milky Way is not coconut. Milky Way is not coconut. Is it? Because I think Bounty is co- Bounty is coconut, which is disgusting. Which is actually disgusting Bounty. I do not like it. I do not enjoy Bounty. Wait, really? It is? What is it in the US? Yeah, if you, if you're mod, you have to have my opinion. You cannot have a different one. Pegasus C, you again got unmodded. How dare you? Twice in one stream, you got unmodded. I do not like potatoes. Exactly, I agree with everything I say. Do you want, I like fries. Okay, listen. We had this conversation a few times already. I do not like potato-shaped potatoes. Okay? Those potatoes on, on the video, disgusting. First of all, they're potato-shaped. Second of all, there is skin on it. Disgusting. How can people eat that? Maybe I'm confused if there's something, it's because I said glue. Could be, could be. I know that there's something that's different in the US than here, but it's just, it's called the same. I don't know where it is though. Sweet potatoes are not potatoes. Sweet potatoes are sweet potatoes, okay? And I love them. If, when I was in Japan, I went to Don Quijote almost once a week and got myself a baked, uh, baked sweet potato. I love them so much, they're so good. Yeah, go for it, Kagaf. Go for it. Do the challenge. I do not know, i- is that, is that pounds or is that kilo? I should pound? Someone, please translate it to rest of the world, please? Please translate it to rest of world? We use, we use kilograms, I don't know what that is. What is? One thirty-six pounds? I would assume somewhere around sixty? Kilo? Ah, smilies, oh! I don't know, Hyasha, I don't know. A pound is not five hundred gram, not in that context. I had to learn that the hard way. It is? I feel betrayed. I feel betrayed. I feel, I feel betrayed. But yeah, seventy is alright. Seventy seems to be a healthy weight, depending on how tall you are. I would need to weigh seventy kilos as well, for my size. But I weigh less, which is not good. Five point seven, that's smaller than me. Five point seven, five seven is smaller than me, I'm five-ten. Don't worry. I'm just very tall. You, of course you are allowed to say it. I post them on Twitter, so... Yeah. My feet are like, yeah, they, they are there. It's just okay. For free. My feet are there on, on Twitter for free. But if you have ten thousand magic stars or something, I don't know what my currency is. Um, but then you can, can get a private foot picture. I made it a redeem. It's more than five-four. It's cra- why is that crazy? Why is that crazy? My hands are so greasy right now, you have no idea. It's insane. It's pure oil on my fingers. Fun fact. I never had a burrito in my life. Not once. I wanna try them. But I never had one before. Is it really? What is? Yeah, I, what? You can't see my feet on Twitter. I got some. I think I got five pictures up there for now. Although I got a Patreon, which is dead. I haven't posted. I haven't posted that since December. Yeah, because there is no good burrito place close by, so... I'm never trying it. And then, I don't wanna spend a lot of money for ingredients, ju- just in case it doesn't taste like I, like I wanted. Welcome back, comment. Welcome back! Yeah, you can see my feet on Twitter. If you enjoy them, you can have a look. Wait, wait, do you have any Polish pictures? I don't think so. I would have to paint them, um, again. I think I only got the golden ones. Next time, okay, next time we make our own burritos. I had wraps, but that's not the same, is it? I had wraps and I like wraps. So I assume burritos taste good too. How are you already at six K again? I should put, I, I should I should, uh, make it higher. When you redeem it, let me know. That I have to check my folder because I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Maybe there's a different color in there, but I'm not sure. Are you done together with the nuggets with oven cheese? Nuggets with oven cheese, I, I'm so excited. Because the pizza with oven cheese was already oof, that was, that was good. That was good.
Shout out to Raising Canes, alright? I gotta say that that was actually quite good.
Everything is greasy and you clean. Wash my hands. I'm so full. It's insane. Why is cheese so filling? Okay, I'm gonna bring that to the kitchen really quick. But it'll be here in, I don't know, ten seconds? Maybe twenty? If I'm slow. Okay guys, I'm back. As you can see. As you can hear, my kitchen is not that far away. Manjo. Kitchen, my kitchen is really close. Like really, really close. Everything's fine. Yeah. Manjo, you're, that's dangerous. Come make that, that's fine. Okay, I think he's doing one menu a day. I wanna do that too, I wanna order everything from the menu. And I wanna try everything. But I need a second person to eat the things I don't like. Because I wanna try everything, and that will fill me up so quick, like one bite out of everything, so I need another person to eat the rest. Maybe I need two more people to eat the rest. We, we definitely not gonna finish that video, it's, um... Twenty-three minutes long, we're not gonna finish it. Welcome back to auto. Dude, I need a second. Are you going to pay? Are you going to pay? I think we're gonna finish Chick-fil-A, and then we're gonna go back to studying. Sounds good. Let's go first. I can pay half. Okay, comment, you pay half, and the mods pay the other half, and then you share whatever I leave for you guys, because that will be a lot. Hmm, I, I think we're gonna do it like this. Pegasus C. He just slammed at the, slammed the table. Do you know what I, what I thought of? Entwist, tristu oder ich? Mann! Von Harald Klügler, have you seen that? Please say yes. He slammed the table, I was like, oh my gosh, yeah, Klügler. Oh wait, no, we, we're done, we're done, okay. We are done. And I go back to study. I do not like that. We have to. We have to. Ah, yes. Ooh, when I was at my besty's place. Uh, we, we watched one episode of that, Pegasus C, we watched one episode of that, the, the drama? It's insane, it's insane, I still don't know how, what that show, show is called, but... Give it a go, give it a go, one episode is enough, half a episode is enough. Only one page left, yeah, only one page left, but I have to, which is pretty bad. Have to find new sources, because if I do not have new sources, I cannot continue, so... It could go pretty bad, and we cannot write anything, but I'm trying to, um... Do half a page at least. We will see, we will see. But yeah. I'm gonna go now, and I will see you in twenty-five minutes.
Break time! Break time! Hi Lucen, welcome in, how are you? Hope you're doing good! Hope you're doing good, how are you? Look how productive I was today! Do you see that? And we are... A quarter... I would say a quarter of the last page. So that's good. That is very good, I'm tired. Okay. Yeah, we won't stream for a lot longer, like... Maybe one more study session, um... I do not have that much energy left. After the rage mode. The rage mode took a lot of energy. I'm... Very dead and I'm very tired. My nose itchy. Red is tired, red is tired. It's a tiger, but it's tired, tired, yes. I'm very tired. Ne manju! I don't have a lot of energy left. I'm glad if we get half a page, to be honest. I'm glad if we get half a page. I have to drink something. So I managed to make the bot ping a discord like... Yeah! I got it, it got twice, I got two pings now. Because for some reason Calbot started pinging as well. I don't know, I don't know why. But now Calbot is like, "Uh, excuse me, you got another bot?" Yes, now I'm doing my job. That's probably what's going on. Yeah, that's probably what's going on. Manju is also kinda tired, so she's gonna... Get annoying soon. So, yeah. By the way, I don't wanna... I don't wanna sit by the fire anymore, it's too warm at the fire. Wanna go... To the window. That's better. Mesok is probably sleeping, she's always doing... Manju is... She's sleeping for most of stream. But, once we have our big break... It's... I don't know. And welcome back, Demon! Welcome back! Did you change your name color, by the way? You were not always blue. You had a different color before, you were... I don't know what color you were, but you were not blue. Did you have, did you change your color? Changed your temperature, really? I didn't know. Huh! He's a rainbow, yeah! Demon, you're a rainbow! You're a rainbow! Sorry for mean demon. Really? You guys always... Piggy Sissy is always blue, Comet is always red, Arthur is always red, Tauro is always red, Lucen is always purple. Why is Demon the only one changing? I don't get it, which is weird, it's supposed to be... Be purple, but I'm gray now. No, you're purple! Lucen, you're purple! I said my color too, I'm orange. Use my head. I don't think that's the reason, but... Okay. I don't know how you do that, but I have to... I will go back to study. Ah, I just hit my head at the desk. I will see you guys in 25 minutes.
Break time! Break time! Hi Lucen, welcome in, how are you? Hope you're doing good! Hope you're doing good, how are you? Look how productive I was today! Do you see that? And we are... A quarter... I would say a quarter of the last page. So that's good. That is very good, I'm tired. Okay. Yeah, we won't stream for a lot longer, like... Maybe one more study session, um... I do not have that much energy left. After the rage mode. The rage mode took a lot of energy. I'm... Very dead and I'm very tired. My nose itchy. Red is tired, it's a tiger but it's tired, tired yes. I'm very tired. Ne manjou! I don't have a lot of energy left. I'm glad if we get half a page, to be honest. I'm glad if we get half a page. I have to drink something. So I managed to make the bot ping a discord like... Yeah! I got it, it got twice, I got two pings now! Because for some reason Calbot started pinging as well! I don't know, I don't know why. But now Calbot is like: "Uh, excuse me, you got another bot?" Yes, now I'm doing my job. That's probably what's going on. Yeah, that's probably what's going on. Manju is also kinda tired, so she's gonna... Get annoying soon. So yeah. By the way, I don't wanna... I don't wanna sit by the fire anymore, it's too warm at the fire. Wanna go... To the window. That's better. Mejok is probably sleeping, she's always doing... Manju is... She's sleeping for most of stream? But, once we have our big break... It's... I don't know. And welcome back Demon! Welcome back! Did you change your name color, by the way? You were not always blue. You had a different color before, you were... I don't know what color you were, but you were not blue. Did you have, did you change your color? Changed your temperature? Really? I didn't know! Huh! He's a rainbow, yeah, Demon, you're a rainbow! You're a rainbow! Sorry for mean demon. Really? You guys always... Piggy Sissy is always blue, Comet is always red, Arthur is always red, Taro is always red, Lucen is always purple! Why is Demon the only one changing? I don't get it, which is weird, it's supposed to... Be purple but I'm gray now. No, you're purple! Lucen, you're purple! I said my color, I said my color too, I'm orange. Need my head. I don't think that's the reason, but... Okay. I don't know how you do that, but I have to go back to study. Ah, I just hit my head at the desk! I will see you guys in 25 minutes.
Okay guys. We did it! We fucking did it! We wrote 3 emails and 2 pages. That's insane, so what did I miss? "How dare you forget the lion!" "It's important." "Is it working for at least one more?" Oh shit, that's a lot. I wish my brain would work, to be honest. That would be pretty good. 2 days? Oh, 2 pages, okay. I'm in god mode, exactly, but... You know what? That burnt me out for the rest of the day. The day is almost over, but... That burnt me out. The red made it impossible. It is apparently possible. I know, guys, it's crazy. Absolutely crazy. But I did it. And it's insane. It's insane. How did we do that? I can't believe it. You guys, I cannot believe it. How did we do that? It's insane, it's... It's just... It's just insane? With tiger magic, exactly. To someone make 3k points for next stream. You have next stream to make 3k points? It's witchcraft. Um, no, it's not witchcraft, because I'm not the witch. Picasi C is a witch. I'm just a magical tiger, you know? Miss your rep. It's tiger power. It's tiger power. Ah shit. But yeah, we're gonna help someone out really quick. Tiger magic tiger gives some language. It's not witchcraft? It's not? It's not? What's wrong, Taro? Wait, yeah, what? Are you doing...? I'm doing alrighty. I'm doing alrighty. We're gonna raid over to the lovely Miss Helium. Grab your raid message. Gonna go over. Be nice. Say hello. Leave a follow if you haven't already. Um... What else? Be nice, follow the rules, leave a follow. Say hi. No. Am I repeating my...? I think I'm repeating myself. I'm gonna go to bed. I'm gonna lurk a bit in Miss Helium's chat and then I'm gonna go to bed. So, I will see you... Oh, we don't have music. There it is. We will probably see each other tomorrow. Because I have a lot more pages to go. I got a lot more pages to go. Girls and niggas. Wait, what? I'm so tired, but yeah. Oh my gosh. I will see you tomorrow, probably. So, bye bye!